Andrew.
Here.
Todd Kirking.
Here.
Tanya.
Here.
Todd Spade and John will not be here. Crystal.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
And Justin.
Here.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance. All right, number two, approval of the May ninth, twenty twenty-three regular council minutes.
This is Crystal. I move approval.
Is AJ all second?
Got a motion, a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, number three, council announcements. Does any member of the council, Crystal?
Hi. Last night I attended a presentation at MacIntosh Memorial Library, and it was from the Verocua Plastic Free Group, and I got a few interesting facts I just wanted to share. Ninety-one percent of all plastics have never been recycled. Plastic does not biodegrade. It breaks up into microplastics which pollute the environment. This one is amazing. Seventy thousand plastic microfibers are released with every load of laundry. And the unexpected is lined with plastic milk, with plastic, milk cartons, paper cups, wrappers, dental floss, and metal cans. Plastics have been found deep in the deep sea, in arctic ice, in beer, in bottled water, and humans. So, plastic production is growing. They've got thirty-three billion tons will be added by twenty twenty-five. So, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up to do a home audit, and that's where you review what's in your garbage can and then see what you could do without. And if you need more information, there's some wonderful people very excited about this, and they're working with their local businesses. And it's verocuaplasticsfree.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? All right, number four, first period for public comment. So, anybody online that would like to make a comment? No? All right, moving along to number five, recognition of Public Works employees for Public Works Week. I'll let Sarah take it away.
All right, yay, I got it to work. Okay, so, my voice is rough today because I was yelling at a bunch of kids yesterday. No, we went for Public Works Week and we visited the kids at the Verocua Elementary School, which was a lot of loud speaking, but it was awesome to see all the kids at the elementary school and how they got to meet the Public Works employees and see our equipment. And I think that's really important. It was really interesting talking to them, like, do you know what Public Works is? And I think, you know, it's such a, like, very generalized term that sometimes it's hard to understand all the things we do. And you guys, you know, you guys know this because you hear it all the time, but, you know, we're taking care of the stormwater systems. That's where all the rainwater goes. We're taking care of the urban forest. We're taking care of, like, brushing compost, so solid waste management. And then we got the utility side. We got the water system, your drinking water, and your wastewater system and all the collection systems. So, in light of Public Works Week, I thought it was important to bring forward the names of everybody at the Public Works Department. Some of them we're lucky to have today. And just make sure that, you know, you know, I think, one of the things I think about a lot is how, it's not always obvious, how we're always thinking about Public Works, and the guys are up many, many nights. And it's not always understood, like, clearly, you know, when we're snow plowing, we're out and about, but there's somebody in the street department constantly monitoring where the snow is at before we go out. So, it's not like he's able to sit, you know, and just hang out at home and not go out and explore things. So, there's people always taking care of things. If there's a storm, we're coming out and we're dealing with tree debris. And then, I will say countless nights for the water and wastewater operators where they're monitoring the system. If there's a big rain event, they're coming in, they're making sure that our system's keeping up so people don't have basement backups, and just making sure everything's running smoothly. So, I just wanted to make sure we recognized everybody here, and I wrote a list so that I did not forget anyone. So, hopefully, I'm not forgetting anyone. All right, so on the street side, we have Chad Hoyam, who's here today, Wade Vickmeyer, Mark Hawkinson, who is our mechanic, Norris Hockinstead, Tyrell Winkers, who I believe is online right now, Scott Peterson, and Kyle Hanson. So, that is our street department. So, those are our guys who are out when we are plowing snow on every event. We also have the utility staff. So, the operations staff, we got Greg Marsh here today. We've got Brock Isert, Jared Rar, who is also here with his son Sawyer, Chad Parker, and Dustin Dahl. And then the office staff here, so we've got Cheryl Purvis. You guys all know Cheryl. Sarah Kemp, who's behind her as well, and Angie Etland Anderson. So, if you could just please give everybody a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, everybody. All right, number six, reappointment of Michael Olson Airport, issued for six-year term expiring nine-one of two thousand twenty-eight.
This is one that has actually expired back in September of twenty-two, so if you did the math, that's why it's off by one year on that. So, just so you wanted to make you aware of that.
I'd make a motion to approve my.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Number seven, excuse me, operator license approvals.
Okay, I had the large list that went out in the packet, and most of these have gone through the background checks with Rick, and he's given me the okay on most of these. So, if it's okay with you, it went through public safety, and if you go ahead and give me the approval to issue these, it would be contingent on those that need to have the background check completed, or there's a few of them that I still need to get the class certificate on that. And so, these all were, went through public safety with that same contingency. So, if you feel so to do the same thing here, that'd be great.
This is Crystal. I'll make the motion to move forward with it, with the exceptions that we had at public safety.
Second. Tanya?
All right, motion, a second. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Number eight, review and approval of liquor license renewals for twenty-three, twenty-four license year.
Okay, again, these were in your packet. This is the first round of them. We have some more that'll be coming to the next public safety, but I wanted to get most of them because these, the license year runs July first through June thirtieth. So, these also went through public safety with their approval. There was one, the Woolly Bear, on there that they did put a contingency on there to hold pending the building permits and, and things. So, I know he did come in today and paid for his permit, but I'm assuming what you meant by that at public safety was that once that all of the official approvals and inspections are complete, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to have that clarification on that. So, that was kind of the proposal that came forward from public safety, that all of these were approved.
Oops.
With the contingency that that one be held pending the approvals. Don't want me to talk no more, or what?
I didn't mean to do that.
This is David. I'll make the same motion that I did in public safety, that the Woolly Bear, he held back until his building, it's all up to code and inspected.
Got a motion?
This is Crystal. I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Number nine, review and approval of temporary Class B beer and wine license for Fourth Stream for fundraiser at Magpie Gelato on June second, twenty twenty-three.
Well, alcohol is the theme for the night, but this is for a temporary Class B beer and wine license for Fourth Stream. This is for a event on June second, Friday, at the Magpie Gelato. It's a fundraiser for the live in Verocua events that are happening this summer. So, they've requested this for six PM to eight PM on that day, and also was forwarded by public safety with their approval.
This is Steve. I make a motion. We grant the application for Fourth Stream at Magpie.
Is AJ all second?
All right, got a motion, a second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number ten, review and approval of Title VI Non-Discrimination Plan.
Okay, this is something that came out of our taxi audit that we had that we've had one of these in place since two thousand fourteen, but it needed to be updated with a few new updated language things in here. And if you've had the chance to look through this, this is mainly something to do with our taxi program, but of course, it could be used for all other options as well. It's basically making sure that we comply with all of the, if we have someone with limited English proficiency, or that we don't discriminate on the basis of race, color, origin, disability, sex, age, religion, income status, and all the usual ones that they put in that policy statement. So, they do request that we look at this every year. Apparently, we haven't done that since two fourteen, so that's, this is kind of the, the gap where they tell us that we probably should update this. So, just going kind of through this or whatever, there's not a lot of new things in there. They do want us to kind of, kind of take a look at it, like I said, every year, have public involvement in it. There's not a lot of, in the past, between two thousand fourteen and now, we haven't had any issues that have come forward. But this is, these are things that we should have on our website. This is things that our, our taxi provider are supposed to have posted. And so, the, the person that was at the taxi, the level where we, that we actually gave us this template to go by. So, this is kind of the format that they want to see. And just kind of if we did have, what surprised me on this when they did do the census is that our, our second language after English was actually German, which I thought it would be Spanish, but it's actually German, which kind of surprised me. But it's kind of the thing that they want us to do, and they want us to look at some, some outreach activities and how to get this all out there into the public. So, just having our public board meetings is part of that, putting it on our, on the Facebook page, having things in the newspaper, possibly doing something at the fair and part of those booths and things like that, and, and other ways just to advertise the fact that we have this, this program out there. And being that we get federal grant monies, that's a lot of the reason that is behind this. So, I won't go into a lot more detail unless you have questions on this, but this is something that they requested that we, that we looked at and updated, and I think it was timed since the last one was in two thousand fourteen. So, with that, I'm just kind of looking for your guys' approval, or if you have any changes that you want to see in there.
This is Crystal. I'll move approval as it stands.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number eleven, review and approval of procurement policy and procurement protest procedures.
Okay, again, this is something coming out of the taxi program that we had for the, this audit. And what we did, and we took this to finance, the procurement policy is not really a lot of new items in here. This is basically taking it from a lot of different areas that we already have and putting it into one document that they would really like to see. So, the code of conduct is one of the things that is probably part of our main procedures, just making sure that everybody is aware that if we have any conflict of interest when we're bidding documents and things like that, that you should recuse yourself, that the employees and officers, anybody on the council, that when we're soliciting things, if you're part of a, if you're going to be a part of a project that you really shouldn't be involved in both places because you could possibly have an advantage on things. We've had that issue in the past. Things like that have happened, and we've, we've had a policy on that, and that's been followed. The one thing that we did talk about in finance and that we, that Nate and I also discussed was that on item number four, where it talks about city employees, officers, directors, volunteers, or agents shall neither solicit nor accept gratuities, gifts, fees, trips, favors, or anything of monetary value in this, they had in excess of zero dollars. And the reason we added it to a twenty-five dollar level is because sometimes we would receive, like, at Christmas time, we would receive things such as cheese trays or cookies and things like that, which could then be construed as a gratuity or a gift. And so, therefore, we wanted to make sure that it was completely up and above board, that nobody realizes that that is not being done because we're trying to solicit, you know, somebody's business. It's something that we already do business with for the most part on those. So, we just wanted to make that perfectly clear. We do have that as part of our employee handbook and things like that. We're not supposed to accept anything of monetary value and, and how you put a monetary value on those things. We just wanted to be completely clear in part of that procurement policy. The rest of the policy, we've already taken from our current one and just put it into this, and that is if we are doing or needing competitive bids, because this is, again, federal grant money here, that anything that's under five hundred that the department had has their discretion to make those decisions on those, those procurements. Anything five hundred to a thousand, that's when they would take it to the, to the lead committee. So, for instance, Public Works would go to the Public Works Committee. Any procurements that are over a thousand then would come from the committee and go to the full council. And that's kind of what we're handling it now, so we wanted to just kind of put this again into another document. And then in addition to that, we never had a procurement protest procedure. So, if we actually have a vendor that doesn't feel like we're following our procurement the way we're supposed to, or that our procedures state that we should be, they have to have an avenue in which to say, hey, I want to have this looked at. So, the protest procedures are now in place, and this, again, was a, was a template that they gave me, that they've used in other locations. So, with that, I'm not going to go into too much detail, but this is something that, that will help check a box off on that audit that we were written up on because we did not have these items. So, there will be financial procedures that will be the next bigger document that will be coming that we kind of have to put out there. But these are, these are some good starts on what we needed to do for this, this taxi audit. So, with that, I'm just looking for your guys' approval or any changes that you want to see in these documents. I know it's exciting.
This is Crystal. I'll move approval with the twenty-five dollar change in there.
Is AJ all second?
All right, we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number twelve, approval of bank signatories for staff changes.
That's me again. With the changes that we have, we have to do new stamps and things because of, what we currently have is the mayor, the deputy clerk, and myself are the three signatories that are on most of these, and the banks require us to have something in our minutes stating who is the signatories before they'll make any changes. So, I thought about doing an actual resolution on this, but then I thought, well, what if we decide that we don't want those same three, and then we'd have to do another resolution? So, hopefully, the staffing won't change that often, but if we could actually state that it's going to be for the, for the purposes of the city side of things, not utilities, because they may do something different, but this, but our stamper would be basically the mayor, the deputy clerk, and myself as the city clerk as those three signatories for changing at all the banks. I would need that motion in the minutes for the banks.
This is Crystal. I'll make the motion.
Is AJ all second?
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thirteen, review and approval of twenty twenty-two Consumer Confidence Report, Public Works.
Excuse me. Share my screen. And Nate's allowed me to do so. Thank you. All right, so, our Consumer Confidence Report is for our drinking water system. It is something that we have to do every year. Screen maybe? There we go. Okay. So, we have to do this annually. Or I forget to.
Okay, so, every year we have to send, we're required to do certain publications, to send it to certain people, certain customers. And then we have the option of doing one of, like, ten things, like, eight of ten things. This letter goes out with our packet, and each of our non-residential customers, which there are three hundred and ten of them, each one of those gets this letter in a packet of the pamphlet brochure. We publish the fact that on our website, it publishes on our website, and we publish this in our paper. That is a requirement, that it goes into our paper record. We put this on our Facebook that it is available at City Hall. We don't put the whole entire report on Facebook, but we do put this letter, and then we do keep it at City Hall.
Great, thank you. So, you know, this is exactly as it says, a Consumer Confidence Report. So, that's why we're trying to be mindful about how we distribute it. Okay, so, I never love how the format is on this, but it is a requirement that we get this information out. So, we're using the D and R specific template on this. So, we have three water sources, four, five, and six. Eight hundred-ish feet is where we're actually at for four right now, and five and six are eleven hundred feet. One thing, whoa, sorry. One thing I also don't love about this is, why am I all the way down here? Is they call everything contaminants. And what I would say is, when you first hear about the word contaminant, you think, oh, that's something that is in the water that was not already in the water, like, it came to be in the water by human activity or whatnot. These, they call anything besides H two O in the water a contaminant. So, just kind of put that in your mind, that it doesn't necessarily mean that something was added or is there without being there naturally. The first part, I'm not going to go through too much about the definitions and the terms. I can talk about that a little bit when we get into the specific parameters. Please feel free to ask me questions. I'm happy to go into more detail. We certainly went into more detail in Public Works Committee, but again, trying to summarize here for council. So, disinfection byproducts, disinfection byproducts are tested in the distribution system. They are a byproduct of disinfection. And so, when there is any organic carbon in the water, when their chlorine hits it, it creates these compounds. So, the first one, the HAA five is a haloacetic acid. We don't have any detectable limit for that or detectable, detectable measurement of it. Trihalomethanes, we do find two point two. The MCL, if you see that third column there, is the maximum contaminant level. That is what we would say when we say the limits. The MCLG in the fourth column is a goal. So, that's your goal level versus your actual limit. And so, obviously, our goal is zero. It's uncommon for water systems to have zero. The rest are inorganic contaminants, compounds. I will say to note that in the third column from the end says sample date, and so, there is a date there if it wasn't sampled in twenty twenty-two, because this is for twenty twenty-two. And that, the reason for that is just because the parameters do not change enough for the DNR to require us to sample them more frequently. So, we do this once every three years for most of these parameters, and it's giving you a range because it's all of the wells summarized in one line. And again, we have three wells, and there's really nothing to highlight in here. Anything was, that's measured is a naturally occurring in the deposits that we are getting our groundwater from. I always mention fluoride here because fluoride is, often people wonder, and there's a lot of communities that add fluoride to the water. In Verocua, we do not add fluoride to the water. That point one is a naturally occurring amount that comes from the deposits that we have in the soil formations. The next section is, you see the copper down here. Copper comes with lead testing. The two of them we test together. So, whereas the parameters we just saw above here, like fluoride that were coming, like, naturally occurring parameters, that would be tested at the well source. Copper and lead, just like disinfection byproducts, are tested in the distribution system. And copper would be coming from copper water services. Lead would be coming from any lead that might be in waters, the water services in the system. Neither of these, well, I should say there may be traces of copper, but they're, neither of them are something that you would see coming from the well itself. So, it's something that's coming from the pipes that the water is sitting in. Unfortunately, these results are from two thousand twenty, and at that time, we still had lead goosenecks in water services on Ruske Avenue. And so, when we test for lead and copper, we have to test for the absolute most likely locations, and there's twenty locations we have to test for. And so, we do have, the way that lead and copper is there's a percentile, and then you have an action level, which is confusing, I think, but there's not per se a limit. At that time, we got a nine point one eight for lead, but those results, those locations were no, are no longer in our system. So, the, the services have already been removed. So, it's kind of a misleading number to look at because it's not really telling you what's here right now. It's our year for lead testing and copper testing again, so you'll see new results for twenty twenty-three. The one we talk about a lot is our radioactive levels. And so, we had tests predominantly, we're looking at the radium, combined radium. So, it's the, the second line listed. It's the two twenty-six and two twenty-eight. They add those two numbers together, and the level found, they have at three point five. So, the limit for that is five. This, again, is also something that's naturally occurring in our water supply, in those soil formations. It's one of those things I always bring up. We choose not to treat for it. We are not required to treat for it. It, we're not going to get a number in our deep wells that are zero. We can choose to treat for it, though, but obviously, that would come at a cost. So, I just put that out there. You know, it's not that we can't do it, but it's a costly endeavor. Some of these things are also things that can be treated at the source, or at the, excuse me, at the end use, so at the tap, right? So, radium is actually removed by water softeners. Like, our chlorine that we have in our system can be removed by carbon filters. And so, there's other ways that people can go about taking it further if they choose to. And that's all there really is here. This is a little blurb at the end that talks about if you do find that you have lead in your system, which, again, we have removed all of our lead goosenecks in the system, and I'll talk a little bit about that in the next agenda item. But if there was concern, like, for example, somebody might have it in a fixture in their home, right? That's something that could happen that we're not looking at, we're looking at the services. And they just talk about making sure your water is water that's just coming into the system or in from the system and not things that have been sitting there overnight. So, for example, they say, you know, your first flush of the day, if you wake up in the morning, you, if you're worried about lead, you wouldn't want to take the first pull off of your tap. You would run it for a while and wait so that the system is getting water from the water pipe in the street, the main, and not your water service. And that's the summary, happy to go into more detail. All of this information you can find on the DNR website. They have every single test to be tested for on the DNR website. You just look under city of Verroca.
Thank you. Questions for Sarah? We need to approve this, is that correct?
Yes, it needs to be accepted by council.
This is Crystal, I'll move acceptable approval and acceptance of the 2022 consumer confidence report.
Just a second.
All right. Motion a second, any other questions or discussion?
I look forward to next year's report because we'll actually see some new numbers.
I know, it's been pretty similar. Yeah, then that's just because the parameters don't change.
All right, uh, so there's other questions, all those in favor, say aye. Post. Number 14, Public Works Annual Report.
All right, I just need to get one second here so I can get it up on the screen. I do that first, I can't see what I'm doing. Wow, look at that day glow on the screen, it is bright. Well, there you go now, you know, you can see us when we're working. All right, so in front of you is the Public Works Group, right? So that is the Department of Public Works and all our employees. Took a picture in front of the new City Hall building. All right, so I'm just going to jump right into it. I always feel like there's so much to be said for Public Works and it's hard to get it all in. You guys want to hear me talk forever?
Can you make it a little bit bigger? I can't read the little print. Thank you so much.
The little print is probably less important, but the, um, the chart, oh gosh, I can't get it to go the right size. Whoa, is that okay? Okay. So Paser ratings, that's our street rating system that we have to do every two years. The DOT requires it. We are going to be doing our Paser ratings this winter again. So this would have been from the conditions on 2021, which it's a two-year thing. But we rate the roads, every single road in the city of Verroca. And we want to see seven, eights, nines and tens. Nines and tens would be like brand new roads. We just finished paving it or within the last couple of years. Sevens and eights means that it's still in decent condition. And, um, you know, it's basically just needing maintenance treatments. Five and six means we should do something to it to help the longevity of the lifespan. It's on the tipping point and three to four, it means it's already gone over the tipping point. It's not something that we're going to be successful seal coating. And one and two is means like this road is really bad. Let's see. Whoops. Oh, maybe because I've zoomed in. There we go. Okay. So with this, I need my, my mouse, that would be a lot easier. With this, it gives us a map of the city about like where are these all located? Some, again, this was since 2021, so some of these have been updated. But as you can see, there's really all throughout the city, there are roads that we need to take care of that are needing some structural repair to the road. And so hopefully in a summary, this means we cannot be lax about our street reconstruction. It doesn't mean that we have to dig up and do a full reconstruction that we see everywhere or see that we do and it's so costly, but this means like doing resurfacing. I talk about that all the time about, could you please give us a resurfacing budget? Not a seal coat budget, but a resurfacing budget. We do have a seal coat budget, which, you know, the blues, that's what we should be focusing on for our blues. That's where we should be seal coating and our yellows and our reds are like, no, we're too far gone here. We need to start doing some real work underneath in the structure of the road. So keep that in mind at budget time. Can't do that when I'm zoomed in. All right, so last year we did micro surfacing, seal coating on Hillcrest, Chicago, Rockview and Heritage. What does that mean? We have, this is our micro surfacing, well, not ours, but the crews that we have come in will do something like this. Oh, I forget, I can't do it like that, sorry. I'm going to learn eventually. So this is what you see, right? You see, it's like you have the old surface and it's taking it to the next level. So what we used to have is like a chip seal, which was like rock and oil put together that created a surface. The micro surfacing tries to take it to a little bit next level where it looks more like a new road. It fills in the cracks and crevices better than what a seal coat would. And you're not getting that bleed through that you get and all that loose rock that you get with the seal coat, at least initially. We worked on sidewalk repairs and we are on our final quadrant. So it was already, all the hazards have been identified and now we're just going through and doing the replacement this year. This is sort of just a cross-section, say, so this was an example of what was last year. So of the hazards that were identified, there was 421 that were replaced or repaired by cutting, 171 by replacement and about 90 of them were the cities to remedy. And when the city remedies it, it means that it's because of a boulevard tree or it's on like the sidewalk approach on the corner. So interestingly though, our cutting, we got 421 hazards at 30% of the cost, but 171 were 70% of the total cost. So meaning our replacements are by far the most expensive part of the hazard program. And we're hoping, you know, once we've gone through the city, this is the first time we did, the first time we ever did, it was one inch. The next time we actually met ADA requirements. Hopefully going forward, we're going to be a lot heavier on the cutting than the replacement. But there's further conversations about that to come. I won't go through and open this, but this sidewalk central is my program that opens up and I can see every location, what it looks like and how it was repaired and how much it costs and who's paying for it. All right, so snow and ice operations, you know, obviously this is what we're doing in the winter time. We, I, it's always a struggle. Everybody is like, so how much overtime do you think you're going to have for the street department? And it's like, well, how much do you think it's going to snow? And how much do you think it's going to snow when we've already got our hours in for the day or the week? Or is it going to be on a stat holiday? It's a really hard number to ever determine. So we take some good estimates, but you know, these are sort of situations that are out of our control. And I know from last year already, we're looking higher on our overtime than we had in previous years. We used about 250 tons of salt this year. We contracted only 450 and with 90 in reserve for the last two years because we had such a stockpile. We were able to take, you know, sort of like, uh, use that reserve that we already had on hand. And I still feel pretty comfortable about that and we just again, have to see where it goes. And so we use our five dump trucks and a grader and a pickup for our plowing. So when we come back and this year we know we've ordered a dump truck. This is, we're constantly asking for new dump trucks. It seems like that, but it's because we had five that are just in our fleet alone for plowing, not to mention the ones that we have for the utility and they're not new. I mean, we are keeping them together and we are in dire need of even another dump truck there for the one we need. We're getting right away here. And we have three vehicles that go out. We had a lot of work we did this year with dealing with cars that were parked. I have one of those pictures and I thought this was a really nice picture that on Sadi Hollow Road. It was a, looks beautiful to me, probably not to Chad who's sitting in the grader. Um, and then of course we do our brush and compost. I bring that up because you know, it seems like a small thing, but people love the fact that we're still picking up brush and compost, but it still takes a lot of resources in the summertime. And so basically like we're in that season from April to November or whenever there is not snow or things on the ground, whoops. This is our brushing compost truck. And as you can see, look how rusty that thing is. It's not for lack of keeping up with it, but our, our garbage truck that we use for brushing compost is not a new piece of equipment. And here's our brush and compost site. So we deal when we maintain that, some of our brush, some of the wood that we have out there, which I will say residents of the city can go get and do with what they will with it. So if they feel like there's some good firewood out there, they could certainly go out there. We also work on the waterways. So we did a lot of waterway work this year and we borrowed equipment from the county to do it because we do not have an excavator. Again, we're just trying to maintain our waterways. And I think it's important to know that we can't just walk away from a waterway like, oh, there's a ditch, we're leaving it, it's good. We have to keep on it because it fills in with sediment and then we have other drainage problems. We also completed arena drive last year. So look at that nice smooth surface. It was not a smooth surface before then. And I will say that, um, we had an estimate that we budgeted for it originally and we came in significantly lower than what we had estimated at. So, you know, I know you think we spend a lot of money, which we do, but we do try to save money too. And then our forestry work. So I know it always seems like we're cutting trees, but we're actually planted almost twice as many trees as we removed last year in 2022. And I always like showing this picture because Todd, did you cut this tree down? I think you might've been the one, this is an older picture. But we took a tree down that we could tell that was dead and dying on the top and then realized that it was in much worse condition than we had thought. And so this is not, one of the kids we showed this picture to when we were at the school said, I thought trees were solid on the inside and I'm like, exactly. This is not supposed to be a hollow tree picture. And so there's a picture of our tree, our Missouri gravel bed that we plant trees in. At the beginning of the season, we try to get bare root trees and we beef them up so we can plant them in the fall. And then there's a picture of us helping out the cemetery when they needed help with all of those pine trees last year. All right, so on the utility side, um, we are always busy on the utility side as well. So we flush the system two times a year and we do problem dead ends. So meaning when I say a dead end, it means we want to see the water system loop, right? We always want water to keep moving, but there are locations in town where it just goes to an end. And so we want to make sure that that water stays fresh. So we're also flushing them sort of out of turn. There was 179 meter change outs. I like to show, now this picture is actually a picture of us flushing the hydrant that is just newly installed. But we have crews that go out for two weeks at night doing flushing every, um, twice a year. And so, you know, for folks who are not on a, um, you know, like a, a schedule where you're coming in regularly at night, it's a big deal. Here's another example of us flushing during the day, but, um, using our diffusers to flush water out. We had four water main breaks and you'll notice that Terrace was a very popular place for water main breaks this year sadly. So again, you know, something to focus on that, that means that we've got problems there in terms of like the integrity of the line, where I'm making sure that it's not going to break again. We had one at South Ruskin Circle and one at Linton. And these are some pictures of what it looks like when we're dealing with water main breaks, right? Their water system is under pressure. We do not want to lose pressure in the water system. So there's water coming into these holes, it's spraying everywhere. We, you know, these are fun ones because you can actually see it spraying. This is a little bit older picture, but it would always inevitably be at nighttime. This one's all, all over during the day in the worst weather conditions that we start seeing these things happen. And so that's a lot of fun to deal with. And so I, our trenches do not look like this when we're entering them, but this is when we're digging to try to figure out where we're at. Uh, we do cross connection control inspections. So we do some ourselves, the residential ones, we did 222s this year. And then we have a car, um, a consultant that does the business, um, the commercial, industrial, anything that's a little more complicated than your standard home. And so that we did 64 of those, 105 Digger Hotline tickets, um, locates, we had a lot of locates. And so that's one of those things that, um, we always encourage people to call Diggers, but then we also want you to do as good of a job as you can about narrowing it down. We get Digger Hotline locates, like do the entire road. And so those guys are out there, like for example, we have one tomorrow like that on Main Street where we have this huge section, we have to locate everything that we can find in that area. So it takes a lot. We have 326 hydrants that we flush and 650 valves that were exercising on rotation. So this is a little bit scattered because some of these dates aren't 2022, but we replaced our well chlorine pumps at all the wells this year. We do quarterly treatments at well five and six. And then we had some things, like I said, that are a little out of turn. We had well five motor and rebuild pump in 2020. And well six, we had a failure and we cleaned it really, really well in 2021, which were really big ticket items in terms of cost. Hopefully that means we won't have to deal with that for like another eight to 10 years. But unfortunately, as you can see, 2021 and 23, which we just did at well four are very close together. So it'd be nice for when Cheryl has to pay the bills, but not to all come at one big, um, all at the same time. But again, you just can't always plan for when you're starting to see failures. And that would be a picture of like one of the new chlorine pumps that we got put in. This is a picture of our well four pipe that was in the ground. Um, and off, a lot of these ended up getting replaced. Uh, again, it was this year, but it's like, these are the kinds of things like that is why a part of these well replacements is so expensive or pump replacements is because we've got these 20 foot steel pipes going 600 feet in the ground that we're replacing. It's a pretty big endeavor. So we have all our water towers that are inspected every year. And in 2022, we pumped one point or 114, 516. So 114 billion gallons were pumped last year, which is a little bit down from the year before. Our average daily flow was 314,600 gallons. So that's, you know, pretty much about average. Our wells are pretty much pumping about the same amount of water, usually well six is slightly higher, but we had it down for repairs and treatments. Like I said, we have annual respect inspections of our towers and we're cleaning our towers every three years of sediment. So I'm not going to go through the quality too much because you guys saw a lot of that in the CCR report. But I will say that like we are regularly testing for back tea and chlorine samples. So that means like five times a month, we're testing all of those things. Um, and we're are successful at meeting all our water quality requirements. And you know, this is an example of some of the chlorine testing we're doing to make sure that we have the proper amount of chlorine in our distribution system. Lead services, this is a big one. We've spent, I would say pretty much has touched every utility staffer. The office staff, the field staff, everybody's been working on this lead service line stuff. Cheryl's done a lot of work with the grant. So we were awarded two different grants over the last little bit. And we were kind of on hold until Rusk Avenue was done. And, um, and then we were able to get another one. So we're, um, been really successful in that and there was 83 services replaced. We are still needing to work on this though. So the new thing that comes forward is inventory, every single, or every single service in the city of Verroca, both on private and public side, which I'll give you a little example. So what the heck are we talking about? We got our water main, we've got our water shut off or we call our curb stop. And then there's the municipal sideline and the private line. Even though the private side is their cost responsibility and it is private property, we are still having to worry about what it is. It doesn't end at our part, our boundary line. And we are required for every building in the city to know what is on either side. And we also need to even know some of the stuff that's happening inside the home. So it's a big deal. And what is all this excitement about? So we got different kinds of water, um, services that you can have, obviously like copper, plastic, lead services, that's, you know, looking at what that pipe looks like. But that little zigzag down there, what they would call a pigtail or a gooseneck is what's causing, has caused us not anymore. So much work is that, just that two foot section of pipe that was connected to a lot of galvanized water services in town. Um, we worked on an asset management plan for the water system this year and I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but you can see those sections where it says cast iron, um, pipe. Those are the ones that we're really looking at replacing, which is about 13% of our system. And I liked the chart on the side there because look how much work we did in the eighties, nineties and two thousands versus what's in the seventies and below. In the seventies and lower, that's what still remains. It doesn't mean how much work is in there, but those are all targets for us. We're looking to get all that stuff out. And so again, I won't go through this, we had conclusions in it, but if you see what's highlighted in red, where our real priority is water main replacement. Our wells and towers, unless there's something particularly new coming forward. Our wells and towers, unless there's something particularly new coming forward, they're in pretty decent condition. And we just have to keep maintaining them well, whereas our, our water mains are things that we just have to focus on. Our collection system side, we have guys out there jetting sewers twice a year. We do some of our own sewer televising. We had no SSOs in 2022, which I like, yahoo. But as an SSO, that's a sanitary sewer overflow. So you hear me talk about infiltration and inflow. What that results in is a big taxiing on the wastewater pipe or us having to discharge into the environment without it being treated, which is considered an SSO. And we didn't have any in 2022. Knock on wood, that has not been our trend up to now. We've had a couple of years like that, but there have been years where there has been some significant SSOs, at least frequencies of it, not necessarily a lot of volume. We did sewer lining, which means we take the pipe that's already there. Instead of doing a big project where we tear everything up, we just basically stick like a, well, we don't do it. The contractor does six, like a felt liner and then they fill it with plastic basically so that they make the pipe inside the other pipe. And it's a good way of us to basically take care of some of this ionized without having to like do this whole big reconstruction project. We can only do that in certain circumstances, but we've been pretty successful. And so what are we looking for when we're jetting? Those kinds of things, right? That's a clay tile pipe. This is what we call, refer to as our dirty videos. This is our televising camera inside of the sewer, but these are the kinds of things that are going to cause problems, obviously, right? And so our jetter will come through and take care of a lot of that. Sometimes some areas we will actually get like a cutter to come in, but we've can pretty much take care of it pretty successfully ourselves. And here's an example of a pipe that's no longer in the ground, but you can imagine water being able to come into the hole on the side of the pipe. And it sounds odd, but clay tile pipe is very common. That was like the practice they went through for many, many years. And we still have a decent amount of clay tile pipe. Our wastewater treatment pad flows. We have, you know, just less than what we have coming into the system that we receive at the plant. This chart on the side, you don't have to look at it in a lot of detail, but this shows like the bottom line is like what we would see on an average day versus what kinds of peaks we see come in in the system. And actually, this is really not bad. I actually made Brock go back. I said, are you sure those numbers are right? Because in 2021, we had 1 million gallons, over 1 million gallons coming in in one day in 2021. So 2022, it got better, but it's not necessarily going to stay that way. We've already had a near 700,000 gallon flow come in in 2023 in one day. So there's a big discrepancy about those flows and that's what we can measure. And so this is what we want to focus on, which we'll talk about in one moment. And we just want to continue working on it. All of this stuff comes into the plant here, and this is our wastewater plant after the upgrade. Whoever hasn't been on a tour can certainly come. But if you look at that stormwater pond in the back there, that pond lined with asphalt, that's what we do when we have too much flow come in. We diverted over there. We certainly don't want that situation to get worse. Okay, so inflow and infiltration. We did a study this past year on our inflow and infiltration, and we certainly have a need to focus on this. It's needing to be addressed. It's difficult to be addressed. I like to see the trending numbers that we're getting, although I'm a little apprehensive because we haven't had a really big storm events in the last couple of years. But what we've taken from our ionized study that we did, which is the abbreviation for inflow and infiltration, is that we're just going to take a next, like we're going to take another focus on the things that we can do in-house. So we got a plans in place about inspecting manholes during storm events and trying to fine tune it better than we did before, as well as smoke testing, which is not the favorite event of the fire department because they always get called out no matter what we do. But it is one of our biggest tools to figure things out, like those holes that we saw on that side of that pipe. And so this is what we're talking, this is infiltration coming into a sewer line. This is the other things that we start seeing, right? We talk about like leaky basements as being one of them, but there are all sorts of places that we can have water that's not supposed to be in the sewer system come in. Whoops. We're on our wastewater effluent. I'm not going to go much into this because you're going to get an entire report on this at the end of June because that's mandated by the DNR. But we had, you know, we've been working under this reduced phosphorus limit. Our limit is point two and we're allowed to go up to point eight with county payments. Our annual load above target means if that number was positive, we would have to times it by like 53 and pay that to the county. We are below even having to pay anything. So that actually is really good, but it also means that the DNR comes to us and says, hold on, you're doing too well to be in this extra program that allows for these payments to happen. You now need to meet the limits. And these two graphs, the real takeaway is that this used to be what it looked like in 2017, right? We were, our limit was one and we were, you know, sometimes getting to that point. This is where we're at now, this point two. And now this is our graph here, over here, you can see now we're just at that level, right? So we have made a significant improvement in how we treat things at the wastewater plant. This one is the more of the utility clerk side of things. And so they are a very busy sort here. They've got 2,162 bills a month and then new accounts and terminations in 2022. There's an average of 215 disconnects per month, which has gone down considerably since the increase the limit up to 60 from 30 and the 85 landlord, landlord notices a month. So there's an average of about, so those 20, 215 disconnects, then they get down to 56 where they actually need to make a phone call. Lucky Sarah gets to do that work. That is actually something that is required as through the PSC that we actually do make that call. And then we get it down to eight disconnects roughly for what we actually have is work orders for non-payment and then an average of two disconnects. So the actual disconnecting of water service. And so we have, you know, these are each the water and sewer service, sewer utility. You know, it's a utility, right? We're paying and charging customers and that is paid for the cost that we have. And on the water side alone, we're over a million dollars at 1.182 million. And then on the same thing with the sewer side, our sewer revenue is 1.468 million. And we have four bonds that are held on the water side and six bonds on the sewer side. We closed on a water and sewer USDA bond for South Russ project in 22. We also paid off a 2020, excuse me, a 20, 2002 sewer bond. So used to saying 2020. And so in 2021, we started sending out the ACH payment information and that really increased the amount that we have up to 658 from 401 in 2017. And credit and payment, credit and debit card payments. There were 2,969 payments for a total of 300,000 and change deposited in total for the year. So, you know, as I was looking at like, what did we go through this year? There was a lot of grant writing this year. That seems to be like the thing for 2022 and 2023 are just like infrastructure grants. And we obviously have a need, as you can see. And so we worked on the main street work and those grants, which were actually secured beforehand, but we were working through those projects. We did get a grant for $400,000 to do West South Street, which you always hear me complain about because it wasn't what we had asked for, but still a good chunk of change. We applied for a grant for Education Avenue. We're hoping, we applied for the first round, weren't successful. We were hoping to hear from the new, this new round. Maybe we'll be successful this time. We have that 2023 sewer projects where we got the appropriations money for it. And we are working our way through that process. It's still tricky. We had the bike and pedestrian plan that we applied for last year. We put ITAs in for safe drinking water and clean water. And we got money for Prairie Wind Way through the L-RIP program. And so we got West Broad or East Broadway, excuse me, West Broadway is one area that we applied for under that 2020 grant. This is Chicago Avenue projects. Oops. No. Let's see, page up. I was trying to zoom in, but it wasn't working with me. So there's our section, we're trying to get rid of our lift station and get our wa, our new sewer line to go around the old landfill. Let's see if it'll work for me. It still doesn't want to do that. When I zoom in, it doesn't like that. And then we have our extension to Railroad Avenue, which is kind of hard to see, but we didn't do the extension on the north and the south end of the project. I literally get people calling me at least twice or every two months asking me, when are you going to finish this Railroad Avenue project? And I keep telling them it's coming. I am just dealing with grant agencies and their requirements. All right, so I'm not going to go into this a lot because we will be getting into this a lot in the future, but a big thing that we worked through in 2022 was the TAP grant, which is that downtown section. And we ended up coming up with option 2C, which is this option. And I'm not going to zoom in. We don't really want to get into it too much, but we went through a planning consultant. We did a public meetings, a whole bunch of them. We talked a lot about it. That's why we have two C, because we had one, two, three and four. And then there was A, B and C. There was so many variations, but we came down to this final option. And then what we're going to talk about tomorrow at six o'clock, public meeting here about the Hисп, which is the main street outside of downtown. Again, I'm not going to go through it a lot, but those, that's our project area. We're going to talk about Decker and the changes that may, are going to be happening there, including the signal changes. We're going to talk about West Broadway and East Broadway and the twiddle, which it looks like this. This is where ours is going to be slightly different. We're going to have lines on the outside to help because our road's slightly wider. That's what a twiddle looks like. And we're going to have our RFBs. So if you remember those, those flashing beacons at Oak Street, which they already have one and West Broadway. And we're going to look about whether we want them at three other locations. Okay. I tried not to take too much time. I'm happy to answer questions, but that would be your Public Works report for 2022. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I tried to make it quick.
Any questions for Sarah? No? Thank you very much. I almost feel bad moving on so fast after that. All right, number 15, possible closed session per Wisconsin statute 1985-1C. Considering employment promotion compensation and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governing body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, billing clerk wage increase.
David, make a motion for a closed session.
This is Steve, a second.
A second roll call, please.
Crystal. Steve.
Hi.
David. Andrew. Todd.
Hi.
And Tanya.
Hi.